One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Kathy said that she would take the role of roll call this evening?
Sure. Trustee Lubeski?
Here.
Trustee McMullen?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Clerk Shofu is absent. Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, support by Trustee O'Connell. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Called to the public? Anybody called to the public this evening? Being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, support by Trustee Petrucci. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have five items this evening on pending new business. Our first one is site plan, Plan Development Application Number 24-005, Square One Plan Development. This is a PD, and this is the preliminary site plan. And welcome if you guys would like to come forward. We do have our planner again here, Troy Langer, and I'm going to have Troy take the floor, give a brief presentation as to where we are in the process, the PD process, where we are this evening, and go through the project, and then we can ask the applicant if he has any questions and open it up for discussion to the board. Troy, you have the floor.
Thanks. Manager Loos could pull up the, kind of the general site plan on the, that one right there.
This one?
Yep. So, first of all, just kind of point out where this is located. This is located at the southwest corner of Highland Road, M-59, and Old US-23. This is very close to the M-59-US-23 intersection. So this property currently is undeveloped. There's nothing on this property, and the applicant is proposing a planned development, a mixed-use planned development on this property, which is about, I'll just roughly call it 30 acres. And the project is essentially, has two, I'll call it, two components of it. In the center of the project is the 168-unit apartment multifamily complex. And then, on the northern part of the property along M-59, and then also it kind of extends south along Old 23, are the, there's about seven commercial outlots. Now, the commercial outlots at this point aren't known. These are placeholders. So what you're seeing there are just kind of generic buildings, what something. It just represents an example of something, but there's no known commercial businesses at this point. But they have it depicted as seven separate commercial outlots. The actual multifamily proportion of it is a much more detailed site plan, and that actually would be a site plan that would proceed on. The outlots would be a separate site plan when they are ready to be developed. So this being a planned development, it's a three-step process. The applicant has submitted a concept plan that has gone to our Planning Commission, as well as our Township Board, for comments. No formal decision was rendered by either the Planning Commission or the Board for the conceptual review. And the next step is the preliminary review. It's a much more thorough site plan. It's got the Plan Development Pattern Book. It's got some architectural plans for the multifamily that are part of that. The public hearing for the preliminary planned, preliminary review of the plan development was at the Planning Commission meeting on May 22nd. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of it. So now it has moved on to the Township Board, which is tonight. And then, assuming this project goes forward, the applicant will still have to come back to the Planning Commission for the final review, which would be, for the most part, at that point, we're really not looking at site plans. We're looking at the Plan Development Agreement. We're looking at any maintenance agreements, any easements, any master deeds that are part of it. Typically, that's kind of referred to as the legal document phase. And then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation. That would then come to the Township Board. The Township Board would see all of those instruments. And then in addition, it would be a resolution for an actual rezoning of the property from what it is currently, general commercial, to plan development. So this is typically the heavy lifting portion of that process, where we're looking at the detailed site plan. In this case, it's the multifamily component that we spent a significant amount of time at the Planning Commission looking at that component. The outlots, the commercial, the applicant is proposing that he would just comply, or they would just comply with the general commercial standards and the township regulations for architecture, landscaping, lighting, and so forth. So that's just a quick overview of the project, and a couple of highlights I want to point out is there's more of a centerpiece in the middle. In the center, there's a road that would come down from M-59, and they have almost a roundabout there where there's kind of a center water, they have the flagpoles there. There's three flagpoles at the center. And they have a connection to the Cheryl Stockwell project to the west, and that allows for an ulterior access out of the Cheryl Stockwell going all the way across the property to Old 23. So that becomes the center point of their property with the connection to Highland Road, as well as Cheryl Stockwell, their drive, and then also to Old 23. And then the apartments would be south of that. So that's just a quick overview of the project, quick overview of the process and where we're at. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Troy, originally, wasn't the Cheryl Stockwell road supposed to be down further? Did they move it? Seems like in conceptual, I remember that.
I don't, I don't think that's moved a whole lot.
No? Okay.
Yeah, the same thing. I thought it was at the very back of the property.
Me too.
No.
Okay, okay.
I guess, I haven't examined it from the conceptual plan if it's moved a little bit. But it would be, from my memory, in this same general location. Because they have, there's about 13 acres there for the apartments. So they need a portion of that for the multifamily.
My second question is, on page 96, it shows the road traffic study, and it shows that red road coming down, but I don't see it on their other plans.
Can you show me what? Can you hold that up?
He's going to put it up.
Which one? Because I probably have it right here.
Page 96. Oh, it says Traffic Impact Analysis.
Oh, is that in the?
Page 96 in their packet.
So that is, so that's going to be, I don't think it's going to be 96. It's going to be down from, you're in the right thing here, this, right there. So right here, what this is, these are proposed road improvements that the applicant is proposing. Now, they still have to go and work with MDOT, as well as the Road Commission. And on the Old 23, which is probably on your plan, it's not going up and down. It's going this way. But they are proposing to extend a lane so that currently, when you come south on Old 23 and cross, that quickly merges to a single lane. They would extend that to their southern limit, so there'd be two lanes there. So before.
So the merge would be at the end of the property, is what you're saying? Instead of at the, like the speedway, I think is where it merges into one lane.
So when you, if you are, for example, you're on M-59 heading west, and you're taking the left to go south on Old 23, there are two left turn lanes. And then as soon as you turn, boy, that just, that ends quickly.
Yes.
And suddenly, you're running out of real estate. They would extend that. They're proposing to extend that south.
Okay.
And then they're also proposing on the north side. Now, the plan you are referencing, Trustee Horning, did not show this on M-59. But they're also proposing some improvements on M-59 where they're creating a deceleration lane and a kind of additional turn lane there. Just keep in mind that this requires MDOT. That one up there will still require MDOT approval, and they're still working on that.
Okay.
I don't, did that help answer your question?
Is MDOT 59 and the Road Commission, Old 23?
Yes. But keep in mind, MDOT has control of, I can't tell you how far south of M-59 on Old 23, but they would regulate access points even on Old 23 if they're within a proximity of M-59.
And it's my understanding, you guys have been trying, or have been working with MDOT for a long time?
Yes.
Okay. And that's why the Board and the Planning Commission is going forward with this without a final approval from the Road Commission, because we don't have that say of however you guys work this out.
Yes.
Is that correct, Troy?
I think we're okay with the Road Commission with the access point. You've got a letter in your packet from the Road Commission. Not so much that the proposed improvements, but at least with the location of their cornerstone lane. We don't necessarily have that with the Square One Boulevard where it connects to M-59. MDOT has taken a big, they don't want to lock themselves into anything. They want to see an additional traffic study before they commit to anything. And just to give you an understanding of what it's like to work with MDOT, the intersection of M-59 and Old 23 currently operates at a level of service of F. I think it's at F at this point. And the general rule, and I'm just being very general here. So the general rule that MDOT has is when you do your development that's going to add traffic, you have to keep that level of service at that intersection at the same level. Now, F is at the bottom. You can't say, well, you can't make it any worse. So it always just stays at that. You can't take that approach. You have to keep it at that same level of service. So that means you have to make improvements to M-59, to the intersection of Old 23. There's a combination of probably 50 things you could do. And so the applicants have a traffic consultant that, within a reasonable budget, will propose a certain combination of things, and then they submit it to MDOT. And then MDOT kind of runs it through their model. And then MDOT comes back and says, no, that didn't work. They, it's really about a one or two-sentence email you get. And they don't provide, well, we think if you did this, or if you tweaked this, it would help. They don't give you feedback from a standpoint of what, you were close, and if you just tweaked it here or there, it might, they just leave you with, you need to submit a totally different traffic study with different improvements. Is that pretty close to what you're?
That's what we're doing.
I have a comment, and I might think I might know the answer to it, but I don't, so that's why I'm asking. On the southeast furthest corner, there looks like there's a little square exception.
Right here?
Yeah. That wouldn't happen to be a put-down place, would it?
No.
No.
I was just, I was just curious. Is that the only thing that would be in that area?
That's actually, is that owned by DTE?
Yeah, it's like some kind of easement or something.
Yeah.
Oh, it's an easement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Subsation there.
Subsation there.
I thought there was a substation on the other side of the road.
No, it's right.
It's right there.
What you're thinking of Supervisor Fountain is to the south, or not?
Okay. So it's part of your property, but it's an easement for DTE?
I think it's actually not.
No.
Oh, it's not? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Could you bring up the landscaping of the actual island? When I was watching it on the Planning Commission, they were, you guys were going through the slides rather quickly.
Yeah.
But it really has a nice look to it. I just wanted to maybe just go into a little bit more detail what that's, kind of where maybe that's facing, and is it like a big roundabout?
It's, is it a roundabout, heavily landscaped with tiered landscaping with retaining walls? And we're proposing three flagpoles with a United States flag, Michigan flag, and a veteran's flag.
Yeah, so there's brick walls in there, decorative brick walls with some landscaping around that. And then in kind of the middle is where you have their three flagpoles. The center flag is, it's shown here at 35 feet, but at the Planning Commission meeting, we were asking on that. And because the scale of it wasn't quite right, that if that's at 35 feet, but the other ones are at 30 feet, just the scale is not right. I mean, those, they should be much closer to each other in height. And so the applicant and the Planning Commission agreed to allow a waiver there to 45 feet for that center flagpole. But then there's also landscaping around the outside of that, and there's sidewalks, kind of that pedestrian circulation, as well as vehicular circulation there. And this whole roundabout there. And basically along their boulevards, there's a lot of landscaping there. I don't know if that helps answer your question.
It does. And could you, could you please go over the walkability of this area, this development as well?
Yep. Let me find what page I need to get Mike to. Six?
Six of this, yeah.
Yeah, right here. Good job. So the dark black lines represent pedestrian walkway movement. There would be one exception to this, and I'll get to that. But essentially, you have a pathway along M-59, and that also comes down Old 23. And then on their cornerstone lane, it's on both sides. And then there's a pathway going throughout the apartment complex in a lot of different ways. You'll notice on Square One Boulevard, it's only on one side going north of the, the roundabout, I was going to almost call it cul-de-sac. And the Planning Commission explored having it on the other side there. I don't, I think it's a little tight. But on the south side of that roundabout, there's also only one pathway. And that's where the applicants have agreed to install it on both sides there. So that would be the one amendment to this plan that you're not seeing, is there will be a pathway on the, going south on both sides there. But you can kind of get a flavor for the pedestrian movement. Nothing's really shown in the outlets, because we don't really know what those are or how those will lay out. But there's opportunities there when we develop them to also get connectivity at that, at those points.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other Board members have questions?
I watched the whole Planning Commission meeting, and I was very impressed with this whole development. So they had a lot of questions over the Planning Commission, and it basically answered everything that I was thinking about. I do have one thing, though. Has MDOT said anything about a traffic light up there anywhere? I mean, you've got a major intersection coming into the center. You've got Cheryl Stockwell, which is a major road going out. I mean, there's no way to stop that traffic for left-hand turns.
So the, the part of the proposal that they have submitted to MDOT would have included a traffic signal at the Square One Boulevard and M-59. Okay. Now, MDOT has not accepted that. So that means they have to go back and continue their discussions. Maybe they can tweak it and get it to be there. I don't know if there's been discussions with MDOT at, are you talking like at Cheryl Stockwell Drive and M-59? I don't know if there's been discussions on that. I haven't, I haven't injected myself into that a whole.
It just seems to me that if you're going west on 59, the only way, the only safe way is you're going to have to go on Old 23 to get to the traffic light. Up at 59, 23 to make that left-hand turn. That'd be the safest way. But that's putting a lot of people.
Yeah. Even turn the left out of that.
It doesn't make sense to do that when they could be putting a light at one of these other two intersections.
Well, I can't never figure out MDOT anyways. Yeah. I mean, they're trying to work with MDOT on those. I don't have answers to, I mean, these are good questions. I don't have answers to those, so it's not really fair for me to speculate on that, on this stuff.
But that ring road, adding that road for Cheryl Stockwell still really doesn't help the people who want to turn left.
Yeah, right.
Because you're coming off Cheryl Stockwell, and it's horrible now. And coming out of here, you're going to have to turn left onto Old 23 with all those lanes.
But it's easier than trying to turn left on 59 with no light.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a light.
And we would have final determination from MDOT before the next time the applicant comes in front of us, correct?
You may not. You will have, before they can get a land use permit to do any work, they'll have to have final MDOT approval. When it comes, if by chance, Square One, MDOT says, no, we got to move Square One Boulevard, that we have to move it east or west, well, then they got to come back to you with the site plan to show, well, then what does this look like? But if, if MDOT says, no, that is okay, Square One Boulevard is okay in its location, and the applicant needs to do other road improvements within M-59, we, for the most part, we don't really get too concerned about those improvements within the right-of-way. And, but we need to have a approval from MDOT before we can issue a land use permit for construction of this.
Do any of these exits and entrances, any of them line up with Walden Woods?
Yeah, the Square One Boulevard one, there's, this plan doesn't show up very well. But immediately north of that, there's a, an access point going.
At Huntington Bank and Seaboard?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That'd be a perfect place for a light. Just say it.
Thing is, it's kind of close to Old 23.
I know it is.
It looks like it would be the logical spot.
It is logical.
I said if they timed them right.
Exactly.
Yeah, they can time it so it's all flows.
Yeah. But they already said no to that one, you're saying.
They didn't say no.
They didn't say, oh, you're working on it?
Well, they're, they're looking at the whole package. They're not saying no to those specific things. They're saying no to what they, what the applicant submitted to them didn't work, which means they have to figure out something different, which maybe the traffic light will still work, but they have to do something else to make the whole package. MDOT's just answering the question on the whole package. They're not telling them what individual components are causing a problem or helping. They're just left to figure that out on their own. Does that make sense?
No.
No. It makes sense what you're saying. It makes no sense what MDOT is doing. That's, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't like.
Did I misconstrue any of that?
No, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
We actually had this entrance west, over here originally. And MDOT had us move it to line up with that other entrance. So we had, our original clubhouse was in this area, and the driveway came down here, so we just flipped. Like, it was not a big deal.
So Troy, in a sense, we will see it. If they have to make a change of this plan, we will see that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we're approving what we see here.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, something? Brett, any questions? Denise, any further questions? Kathy? Do you have anything to add this evening?
You know, I kept my presentation very short. I'm not trying to belittle the project. It's a, it's a big project for a community like us. There is a presentation video, it's about a minute and a half long, that really kind of shows what the insides, you know, if you did watch the Planning Commission meeting, you probably got to see it. But I'll just offer that, if any of you really wanted to see what the clubhouse looks like, and you didn't get a chance to see the Planning Commission, their, their presentation at the Planning Commission, ballpark of an hour. If that was a little lengthy, the video's a minute and a half long. We do have that ready if anybody does want to see it.
Did anybody not, obviously Summer was there. Did anybody not, you said you saw it?
I watched.
I watched.
I watched.
Yeah, which was, which is nice to have that feature when we tape them. And we asked our manager last Friday to make sure that it was out to all the Board members. I think you just take your time, and, because sometimes it may be a long time just to sit. But it was very, I mean, your team that showed up was very impressive. I mean, you.
From landscape architect to.
Yeah, they had everybody there.
Yeah. And that was, in review of this meeting, we had talked as an admin group, did all those folks need to come tonight? And the reason that we suggested that they don't, because you were so thorough that first call through.
Thank you. Yeah.
So is there anything else this evening from anybody? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the site plan PD 24-005, the preliminary plan development, site plan for Square One Plan Development as outlined in the staff memorandum dated May 27, 2025.
I'll support that.
Motion by Trustee O'Connell, support by Trustee Petrucci. Any other discussion? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and all of your efforts to get to this point. Okay, we'll move on to item number 7B, which is 2025 Kraus Road Reconstruction Project. This is in the Village by the post office. Is it going to be Mr. Hable this evening, or Mr. Loos?
I'll take it there, Supervisor Fountain. For some reason, it's not giving me the.
Don't link to it.
Didn't like the link to it.
There was nothing in the packet.
There wasn't?
No, because I print the packet for four of us, and there's nothing in there.
Oh, I see here. Oh, that's interesting. All right. Well.
Didn't we already go through this?
We did it.
We did. So what, and I can, I can give you the roundabout of it here. But so what we did when we originally went through this project was we approved $69,900, $800, somewhere in that ballpark of engineering, okay? The engineering for the project was done. They did, the Livingston County Road Commission did bid the project out. When the project was bid out, they received three bids, I think? Three bids on the project. The current, where we sit currently for that project is, just want to make sure I get the right number here, $563,137.99 was the winning bid. With our $70,000 in engineering, it will put us over by about $32,000, $33,000, correct?
Correct.
So.
Because that first bid was.
Because, so what, so the bid that was actually taken in the bidding process was the second bid. The first bid was cheaper by about $35,000, which would have put us at our budgeted amount. That contractor, when they bid, they did not fill out all their paperwork correctly. Therefore, their bid had to be thrown out. So the second bid, which is Fonson Construction out of Brighton, is the winner of that project, the winner of that bid. So what we're coming back for this evening is, we budgeted $600,000 for the project. Our total will be $632,000, somewhere. We're trying to pull it up really quick. Sorry, I apologize. We had it broken down in that originally, but the, for a lack of intensive purposes right now, let's call it 600. right now, let's call it $633,000, I'm just gonna round it up. So we're over by about $33,000 on that because of engineering and going with the second bid as opposed to the lowest bid on the project. That being said, it's still coming out of Road Village dollars, so it's, and it's, you know, with the little bit of surplus we had left, it's still able to cover it. But an amendment will have to be done to that line item for the project.
So do we have to move to approve an additional $33,000 or?
I believe the, the way the memo was written up, Kathy, that it was for the move to approve the $632,137. And I believe there's a .99 on the end of there, if you can believe that. I apologize. It was not my doing.
Now, is there any?
We did have some, I will say, we did have some difficulties with getting this agenda uploaded. I was working on it Thursday evening and Friday morning a little bit.
Might be why it won't load up.
Every time we uploaded it, it would leave something out. So this must've just been the one that got pulled out this time.
Is there any contingency built into this, this figure?
No, because the, the contingency in this project is built into the road commission's bid in this.
Oh, okay.
And so they do build a contingency on top of it for their projects themselves.
Okay.
So I wanna say it's between a 10 and 15%. So the, but this project here as it sits is the bid from the contractor for the additional. And part of that too, if you remember, we discussed originally with Kraus Road, even though, I'm gonna call it the plus side of the intersection at Kraus Road and Heartland Road, was redone not too long ago, this is, this is milling back to the bridges on Kraus and on Heartland Road, south or, to the west, to the south, and then north into the village, just a hair there, to repave it all at one time, so you don't have seams of old asphalt and new asphalt. So that, that did add a little bit to the project, but not much. Yeah, $632,800 and .99.
You're the person, .99.
Is the motion on your paper there? Do you want to have Summer maybe read it? No?
I would love to.
He passed it to Joe. Pass the law.
Any other questions?
Wasn't it, wasn't it supposed to start on Monday?
So this was, this was the other portion of this, is when we went through, we approved the engineering, once they bid it out, and, and then came back and subsequently said they want to start June 2nd. Our last board meeting, we did not bring the overage of it because we only had four board members, we didn't have everyone here. So we held off till this board meeting. They wanted to start yesterday, but, I mean, I would assume it's gonna be within the next week.
I saw survey stakes were up.
Especially this being such a time crunch project.
Right.
And I believe in the contract, they do have a date of completion, they have to be done by, I believe it was like August 19th.
Okay.
Before school starts.
Yeah, it's school, right.
Yep.
Any other questions? Summer, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Move to approve the project agreement for the 2025 Kraus Road Reconstruction Project with the Livingston County Road Commission and allow the Public Works Director to act on behalf of the township for the decisions relating to the project for costs not to exceed $632,800 and .99.
Second.
Motion by trustee McMullin, support by treasurer Horning. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
So, so they're gonna have Kraus Road all closed up then, right?
Yep.
What are they doing down 59?
They are, the MDOT is grinding those seam bumps, if you notice where the asphalt heaved.
The traffic was, has been back, it's horrible. Now, now Kraus is gonna be closed. We're gonna need airplanes to get to the.
Kraus will just be closed from Heartland Road to the school.
Right. But 59 is, is messy right now. It's traffic is because of 96 construction, people I think are taking 59. Because they have Latson Road cut off, they have all the exits.
I mean, it backed up past 59.
Yeah, they headed down to.
And nobody lets you out to make a left, and even if they let you out, you can't see what's coming down the other side of the road. It's.
They headed down to one, one lane yesterday.
Oh, yeah, today too.
Monday.
Right in front of the roadblock.
Yeah.
How long is that project gonna be?
Is the road.
No idea. But they're moving pretty quick. I think they did a pretty good stretch those two days, well past Poland, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, our next.
We didn't vote on that, did we? Did we vote?
No.
No, we just got.
We had a motion and a support.
Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number C is an agreement between Heartland Township and the Heartland Enrichment and Recreation Organization, i.e. HERO. And I believe this is for the next three years, correct?
Correct. Yep. So what you all have in front of you this evening for the next couple agenda items here are agreements between the respective organizations and the townships. So we've discussed this kind of at length with all the different organizations. The, what, what you'll see in here is, as you start to look at some of these, the documentation and the agreement, it goes through '29, but with our fiscal year, it's technically fiscal year '28, '29. So the reason it's written up in fiscal year is different than calendar year, just wanted to clarify on that. So what this is, is just, it's, it's the exact same contract, it's a renewal. We have not made the payments yet, correct Kathy, to Senior or to HERO, because they're made in July of every year. So this year, the payment would go up the $1,000 to $23,000 for each HERO and the Senior Center, and subsequently increased by $1,000 each year through the '28 fiscal year. This contract would go through March, sorry, 31st of 2029. The reason for doing that is, is that's the term of everyone's seat on the board. So should a new board come in and want to renew these contracts, all the contracts were incongruent with the boards, so.
It'd go on for another five or six months.
Right. It would go on, yes.
The new board can make the decision, they want to.
Correct. It would go until the new fiscal.
The new budget here.
Correct.
And didn't we do the same thing with community council?
We have not done that with community council.
No, we did it with the.
We did it with the historical society, or the museum.
The museum, we did that.
$500.
Yep.
That was the other one.
Yep, so that one we've.
Already done.
We've already done that.
Yep, okay. These are the, these are the, the last three. One of them is, is with HIA for Springer Field, but I mean, next agenda item, we can, we can get there, so.
We stopped the vote on that one too, right?
All of them, yeah.
And we had.
I'll move to approve the contract as presented with Heartland Enrichment and Recreation Organization HERO for fiscal years 2025 through 2028.
Support.
Motion by trustee, or treasurer Horning, support by trustee Petrusi. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And item number D, which is an agreement between Heartland Township and the Heartland Senior Activity Center. It's the same contract, correct?
Same. Same contract, it's the same outline. It's the payment that we made in July for '25, which is why you see four, there's four pay, whoops. Goes with a $1,000 increase every year. And these, the way it's written in the original contract is $11,500 with two payments. So that increases by, on January 1st, will increase of $1,000 each year. So this year, it was $11,000 and $11,000, now it's $11,500 and $11,500 to make it to $23,000.
I would suggest maybe in 2029, we clean them up to give everybody one payment one time a year and.
Yeah, well, because the HERO, HERO is, Hero's one, but this is two, right. Yep.
Just be.
I agree with that.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I agree.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike on that? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract presented with the Heartland Senior Activity Center for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2028.
Support.
Motion by trustee Petrusi, support by, is it trustee Levesque? Any other discussion? And being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And our last pending new business this evening is agreement between Heartland Township and Heartland Area Youth Athletic Association for the use of Springer Field. And I think just for those that don't know, maybe what our agreements are with some of these, like, community soccer.
Yep.
Could you just briefly explain for those at home, how, how we work this out?
Yep.
And how we pay them and what, what dollars go for?
So with all of youth sports in Heartland Township that are under the HIA umbrella, which is Heartland Area Youth Athletic Association, the use of Springer Field for baseball, softball, those sports, soccer, lacrosse, football, which one am I missing? A missing one. Flag football, they, they all use Heritage Park. So the agreements we have with the respective entities are that essentially the township would maintain those parks as a, a rough-cut field for people to play in, things like that. The township then has agreed with the recreation partners that we basically pay them what it would cost the township to maintain those parks as we would throughout the summer. Now, the athletic associations, they're the ones that actually keep it, they fertilize, they mow, they pay the power bills and such on the irrigation and things like that. The, we did have, was it last year? Two years ago where the well was replaced out there that was part of ARPA funding as well, wasn't it? That we had turned that back into replacing their well for them. But they stripe the fields, they maintain all of the fields. Same with Springer Field, which is off of Heartland Road, all the baseball diamonds over there. Those are all maintained by HIA, striped by HIA. So working with the recreation partners, as we do not have a recreation millage or anything of that nature, we work very well with these partners to maintain the parks for the youth athletics. And as far as the payments, Kathy, is it, how many times a year? Five?
I said seven.
Four? It's a seven?
Yeah, I think it's the summer, cold.
Yeah, the summer months.
Through our.
Summer months, yep. So payments are made regularly to the different organizations for what the township's cost would be to maintain them throughout that summer month. Is that?
Yeah, and for instance, when the fence had to be replaced at Springer.
Yes.
The township upfronted those dollars and then that, those associations paid the township back over time. When we put the irrigation system in at.
At Heritage Park. And that was put in, yes.
The township paid to have it installed, then the, the.
Football, soccer.
Paid it back over a 10-year period.
Yep, yep.
So the reason that they are as nice as they are is that they're maintaining those at their expense. Matter of fact, I think they put quite a lot of money in the, in the softball, baseball diamonds at Springer, with whatever they put in the infield, it's, it's, you probably know what, what they use on it. It's not just gravel though, it's, it's a special type of clay, I think.
Porwood clay.
Or something. But they paid for that.
Yes.
And had that put in.
Yep.
Yeah, well, thanks for that. So.
So again, this is, this is, in this one, again, we had some technical difficulties here through this process of this packet. It didn't transfer, because you, you entered the dates and it didn't transfer it over, so. But yeah, this is an agreement that, it runs through the spring of '29 again with them. And this, now this will put all of our contracts with any partners or any other entities through the spring of '29 and the '28 fiscal year. Just make sure I state that, because it does appear a little goofy sometimes, so.
And does this, does this memo have the amount?
I don't think it does.
I don't believe these do. This is just for the use of, right here, right here, yep. HIA every year in this agreement, some of $9,000 payable in seven equal monthly installments, $1,205, $285.72 each. Yep. So seven equal payments for, this is, this is HIA baseball.
Which is Springer Field.
Correct.
We have similar agreements with.
Correct.
The other HIA partners.
Correct. And those were just renewed.
Individual agreements.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Other questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract as presented between HIA and Heartland Township for the use of Springer Field.
Motion by trustee Levesque, support by trustee O'Connell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Board reports this evening, we start with trustee McMullin.
No report.
Trustee Petrusi.
I just want to mention to the board that the fire authority is putting together a three-year strategic plan. We will be voting on it our next meeting, the end of June. Dan would present it to the board after that.
Thank you. Treasurer Horning.
No report.
Trustee O'Connell.
No report.
Trustee Levesque.
No report.
I have nothing this evening. For those that aren't interested, the Heartland Polo Event is, I believe, this Saturday and Sunday. I'm not sure if there's tickets available for the Friday night event, this, or Saturday night event. The Sunday event is open to families.
Correct.
They'll have the ponies out there. This weather this weekend is supposed to be much better than last year's 50 degrees and snow.
And snowy rain.
Nice.
This was a nice event and it's always well-attended. I have nothing else this evening.